Good evening, welcome to the Village Board of Pleasantville, New York. Tonight is our annual organizational meeting, which is an annual event where we install new members of the board and also go through a list of resolutions that are required on an annual basis. As always, you can catch us live on PCTV via Verizon or Cablevision and also on the government channel. And you can watch our telecasts through live webcast at PCTV76.org or afterwards on on-demand webcasts at PCTV76.org. So tonight, our order of business is different from a typical meeting, and that is to welcome the new members of the board, to say goodbye to departing members of the board, and to go through a list of resolutions. So the first comments we have tonight are about our departing trustee, Steve Lopez. So let me just step to the podium. Steve has served on the Village Board for the past three years, which is a fraction of the time he has served the village. He has been a member of the Planning Commission prior to his service on the Village Board, I think thirteen years, am I right, Steve? Which is yeoman's service, to say the least. When he first arrived on the board, I was struck by the fact that he's not just Steve Lopez, he's Stephen Lopez, A.I.C.P.R.L.A.C.L.A., because he is both a certified landscape architect and a certified planner. That means he has ten letters after a five-letter last name, which is suggestive of the kinds of skills he brought to his work on the board. And the fact that though some of us come to what we do here as amateurs who are learned on the job, Steve, in his service, not only as a professional landscape architect and planner, as a former commissioner of planning in the town of Greenberg, and as a professional planner by day, came to us with substantial skills which I am hopeful we will continue to tap. So Steve, if you'd step up here for a moment, we have a couple of things to give you. For those of you who don't know, Steve actually lives in a house on Bedford Road that was chronicled by the eminent historian Kerry Lopez, his own daughter, in a recent little history book about houses. And I think your house was 1848?
Eighteen thirty, I believe.
Something like that. At any rate, what I have to give you here is a key to the great city of Pleasantville. And what I might otherwise say is it doesn't open anything, but in your case, eighteen thirty house, it might be the front door.
Thank you.
So I am delighted to give you that. That is a small emblem of the affection and respect we have for you, not only for the service on this board, but for the service you have given the village in so many other ways, and for the service we expect from you in the years to come, if you are willing to be kept in the harness. We also have a plaque to give you that says, "The Village of Pleasantville, New York, presents to Stephen Lopez in recognition of exceptional leadership and dedicated service, Village Trustee, April 2009 through April 2012, Planning Commission, November 1995 through April 2009." So that hopefully will allow you to increase your hourly rate by a little bit when your clients see it.
Right.
So I just want to say, it's been a pleasure to serve with you. We're delighted that you provided your services to the board, and if you would like to comment briefly, we would hope you would.
Well, thank you, Peter, and thank the board. I'd just like to say thank you, of course, to the residents of the village, who have had the pleasure of serving over the last three years. I thought we accomplished a number of very important things, and certainly there's enough left, one or two things probably, that this board might be able to address. I think they could probably do well on their own, they'll figure it all out at some point. But again, I'd like to thank the residents of the village, having the opportunity to represent you all. It was a great learning experience to see what is cooked on the other side of the table, one that I haven't been on, although I've been on this side of the table for many, many years, many decades, actually. So again, thank you very much, and thank you Bernie and the board.
Judge? Thanks to Judge John Curley for coming to swear in, both me for my second term, Jonathan Cunningham for his fourth term, and Colleen Wagner, the new member of the board, for her first term.
You all set to sign up again?
I'll start.
Raise your hand, and pray after me. I state your name.
I, Peter Shearer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Municipal Code of the Village of Pleasantville.
And the Municipal Code of the Village of Pleasantville.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As Mayor of the Village of Pleasantville.
As Mayor of the Village of Pleasantville.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Mayor, congratulations.
Thank you.
Again. Let me help you, Judge. I state your name.
I, Jonathan Cunningham.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Municipal Code of the Village of Pleasantville.
And the Municipal Code of the Village of Pleasantville.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As a trustee for the Village of Pleasantville.
As a trustee for the Village of Pleasantville.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Raise your hand, and pray after me. I state your name.
I, Colleen Griffin-Wagner.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Municipal Code of the Village of Pleasantville.
And the Municipal Code of the Village of Pleasantville.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As a trustee for the Village of Pleasantville.
As a trustee for the Village of Pleasantville.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Raise your hand, and pray after me. I state your name.
I, Colleen Griffin-Wagner.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Municipal Code of the Village of Pleasantville.
And the Municipal Code of the Village of Pleasantville.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As a trustee for the Village of Pleasantville.
As a trustee for the Village of Pleasantville.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I'd like to invite each of us to comment briefly if they'd like. Colleen, would you like to make any comments?
I would like to, I'd really like to thank the people in Pleasantville for supporting me, and I look forward to serving this village to the best of my ability. I want to say thank you to my sons who are here today, who wanted to know why there were signs around town with my name on it, and that they didn't like the color. So this is why, fellas. I'm very excited about this prospect, and I hope that I can do Steve Lopez justice for the job that he's done. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you again to everybody in total residence of Pleasantville. Congratulations, Colleen. Steve, it's been a joy, I got to know you, and you've been a good friend and a good colleague and a mentor on the board, too, especially all things planning and zoning, which aren't necessarily the things that I dwell in or enjoy dwelling in. But thank you, and I'll miss you on the board. You know, elections, it's easy to talk about contested elections once you've won one, and the truth is, they're not very easy. And I don't think they should be. I think that there is a bit of a rite of passage that's required from anybody wanting to go through this, because the job's important. I think it's job's important, and I come in, and I know my colleagues come in every week with that intention, because what we can do can have a real impact on this village. If we do it right, it's a positive impact. If we don't, maybe not so positive. So we take the job seriously. I ran this year, and I'm going to take a couple more minutes than I normally do in these kind of things, because I ran this year, not as a part of any party, but independently, and quickly realized it took a lot more work than I was hoping it would. Right down to making of the signs, posting signs, and as a funny sort of side note, so I had my signs out, and then Colleen put her signs out, and they were huge! And I looked at my signs, and I said, "They look like, jeez, they look like X-wing fighters on Star Wars versus the Death Star." And then when she said in the debate, and I swear I heard this, you know, "How do you describe yourself in one word?", and she said, I thought, she said, "The Force." I said, "Oh, my God." It's come full circle. But, you know, it takes time, effort, and it takes more than anything, people's willingness to help you. And there were a lot of people that helped, helped me with the signs, helped me get signatures. You know, it is, I am truly humbled by the offers that came in. I'm also, whether I won or lost, was extraordinarily thankful to Bernie Gordon, to Mike Guilfeather, to John D. Van Bocken, to Joe Stargiati for their endorsement. You know, these are guys who are one tough with their endorsements and don't give them out easily, and two, know the rigors it's required, day or month, week in and week out, to serve the village. And to have my former colleagues offer that form of public support was something that I'll cherish forever, and thank you, guys. There were, you know, a couple of other people that held coffees for me and who wrote letters, the Balducci's, Tom Connell, and Kitty and Jeff Howe, all very much publicly put themselves out there, and I thank you for that as well. And finally, I mean, I'm not sure that I actually got her vote or not, but I want to say thank you to my wife. No, I'm pretty sure she voted for me. But she hates contested elections. It is not something that she does well, but I have to give her a lot of credit. I did a number of emails, and she read them and reread them, and really was a good sounding board, a great sounding board, as she has always been for the last thirty or so years that I've known her. And even hard to believe, I don't know, guys, whether you got involved with your mom's campaign, other than to criticize the signs or not, but even my daughters got involved a little bit, mainly to criticize my emails. But, and they're good at that. But nonetheless, I do thank them. And finally, I'd like to thank Kevin Martin and George Dolce as well for running. It's not easy to put yourself out there, and this village needs quality people to do that, and who are willing to step up and make, you know, make a statement, and to say, "You know what, I put myself out there because I care about this community." We, every person on this board understands that, past board members understand that. And all I can say is that while it's uncomfortable to go through contested elections, I'm glad that I did, and I think we should do it more often, because quite frankly, at the end of the day, it encourages more people to come out, and that's what this village needs, and it's going to be what's really going to be required for this village to progress forward and continue to be a great place to live and raise our families. So with that, I say thank you, and on to the work.
I will keep my comments brief tonight. I'm emerging from the plague, and I'm not at a hundred percent, but wouldn't miss this meeting, just like I don't miss any meetings unless I actually have to. I am proud and happy to take on a second term as the mayor of Pleasantville, and add that to the seven years that I served on this board prior to that as a trustee. I think that all of us collectively, not only the people you see here, Steve Lopez in the audience, and the many members of our boards and commissions and volunteer groups of every sort, can look back to these three years as times of some significant accomplishment amid some significant difficulties. Clearly, we collided with an economy in trouble. We've had a series of tragedies that have befallen our community, either directly or indirectly, that have taken our attention and our concerns and required our action, and I think collectively, the community has risen to those challenges and has performed admirably. I can say with conviction that this board, like the boards that preceded it, have taken no shortcuts to leave this village in a solid, substantial position, and I think we can say with some pride that we're in a position, buffeted as everybody is by the economic conditions, but in about as solid a position as one could hope to be, indeed, perhaps the envious of our peers, and all the residents of Pleasantville can take comfort in that. It's not an easy road, it won't be an easy road. We have posted our draft budget and have a budget hearing this time next week, Monday, April 9. I encourage you to tune in or visit to hear the details of our forthcoming budget, which essentially show flat expenses despite fairly steep increases in some mandated costs, and at the moment, teeters us right at the edge of the state-mandated tax cap, but I am optimistic that we will live within it. More to say on that when we reconvene a week from now. There are all kinds of exciting things going on in the community. I think chief among them is the fact that the long moribund MLA property is making its way through the approvals process to become the new headquarters home of the Henkel Knife Company. They have been before the Planning Commission, were before the Zoning Board this past week, and achieved all the approvals they needed at zoning, and we look forward to seeing the rejuvenation of that site, some substantial renovations, and the arrival of a new anchor, commercial tenant in our commercial district. Amid that, there are lots of other good things going on. You can see it all around you. Mike Testa reported to us, as some of you may recall, about three months ago, that there are currently more commercial building permits active in the Village of Pleasantville than at any time in his twenty-some-odd years as building inspector. So to see that kind of activity in so many different places in the village in an economy that has been struggling as the United States economy has been, I think is a statement of the fact that this is one fine place to live, it's one fine place to do business, and we are going to continue to work as hard as we possibly can to sustain that. I just wanted to echo Jonathan's comments, not only about contested elections, in my case, I was unopposed this year, but I think the community should know, should appreciate, should respect the fact that every person who's ever sat at this desk does it only for their affection and concern and interest in this community. There are some boards in the region that actually pay you a reasonable sum of money and give you health insurance and all of the above. Not so in Pleasantville. The mayor gets $100 a week, the trustees, I don't know, $60 a week, something like that. No health insurance, no freebies, no nothing. And honestly, I think that's as it should be. I can't say that it isn't difficult at times, it certainly is, because what we all do here takes time away from our day jobs, as well as from our families at night, and it's an uphill battle. And yet, what I can say with conviction is that what it is meant is that everybody who chooses to go through the process of joining this board, and who ultimately does, does it with no financial interests in mind, but only the desire to serve. And although we vigorously, freely, enthusiastically disagree on many subjects, and we can promise you that we still will, it is a board of great collegiality, and that board has served this community with extreme honor, and you can look forward, I know, to a year, and two years, and three years of the same. So we have to earn it every year, this name called Pleasantville, but I think this year we've earned it, and we'll try our darndest to earn it this year and every year. So I want to thank you all, I want to welcome Colleen to the board. We're delighted to have you. We're delighted to start to even out the gender balance. And Jonathan, a pleasure to see you back after so many years. Mindy and Brian, we knew you were going to be here, so there are no fond words for you tonight. Lastly, I just wanted to say thanks to the people that do the real work. Patty Dwyer, our village administrator, who leads this village so ably and so successfully. It's a pleasure to work with you, and a pleasure to see you back at a hundred percent, or maybe ninety-nine. Every one of our department heads deserve the same honor. Judy Weintraub, our village clerk, the anchor of our meetings. And then lastly, I just wanted to comment, it's been a year of some substantial changes with the retirement, as of Friday, of our longstanding DPW superintendent, Steve Johnson, and the retirement earlier in the year of both our police chief, Tony Charlitti, and later in the year, our police lieutenant, Mike Wilson. So these are faces and names that have been a part of the village and the village staff for a very, very long time, and it has been an occasion for a lot more change than previous boards have seen. But I report with enthusiasm that Chief Love has taken the reins of the police department. We are about to appoint a new lieutenant, and there are lots of good things going on in the police department. We're in the midst right now of the search for the new, for a new DPW superintendent, and look forward to making an appointment to that post within the next month or so, if not sooner. So these are interesting times in which we live, but we are very, very, very fortunate to be living them right here in Pleasantville, New York. So thank you all. Now we get to the exciting part, which is the extended resolutions that were required to make annually. The first three are mayoral appointments, which I will read, and then we'll rotate them around. Number fifty-eight will be Colleen Wagner's very first, very first resolution. So the first is number fifty-five. Resolve the Board of Trustees, the Village of Pleasantville hereby approves the following persons, the positions lifted below for terms in accordance with village law. Deputy Mayor, Mindy Burrard, through April 2013. Village Clerk, Judith Weintraub, through April 2014. Register of Vital Statistics, Judith Weintraub, through April 2014. Deputy Village Clerk, Patricia Dwyer, through April 2013. Deputy Village Treasurer, Pamela Hoffman, through April 2013. Acting Village Justice, Virginia Collins, through April 2013. Trustee of the Police Pension Fund, Jonathan Cunningham, to serve as the Mayor of Chief of Police, through April 2013. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I, motion approved, number fifty-six. Resolve the Board of Trustees, the Village of Pleasantville hereby approves the following mayoral appointments. Trustee assignments: Ambulance Corps District, Farmers Market, Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and School Board. All trustee, Mindy Burrard. Architectural Review Board, Library Board, and Zoning Board of Appeals. All trustee, Colleen Wagner. Business Support Council, Planning Commissioner, Commission and PCTV. All trustee, Jonathan Cunningham. Beautification Committee, Conservation Advisory Board, and Recycling Committee. All trustee, Brian Skarstad. Affordable Housing Committee, trustee, Brian Skarstad, and myself, Mayor Peter Shearer. And to me, Peter Shearer, the Chamber of Commerce, the Fire Department, and the Northern Westchester Energy Action Coalition. Trustee, Department Liaisons, Parks and Rec and Senior Programs, trustee Burrard. Public Works Department trustee, Skarstad. Building Department trustee, Wagner. Finance trustee, Cunningham. Police Department, Mayor Shearer. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I, motion approved, number fifty-seven. Resolve the Board of Trustees, the Village of Pleasantville hereby approves the following persons to various boards, commissions, and committees. Zoning Board of Appeals, Steve Kraus, through April 2017. Planning Commission, Russell Klein, Joseph Patenza, and Paul Sohigian, through April 2015. Architectural Review Board, Bjorn Slate and Jeff Lupica, through April 2015. Ethics Board, John Nona, through April, excuse me, 2013. Public Safety Committee, Chief Richard Love, Fred Hettinger, Joe Gulata, Chris Ettrali, and John Cullen, through April 2013. Village Curator and Historian, Carsten Johnson, through April 2013. Beautification Committee, Kathy Dinkle, Chair, Marion Coglin, Franz Capella, Elizabeth Ward, Gary Carriero, Tanya Cunningham, Marlene Knappi, Mary Lee's Watts, Amy Harder, and Colleen Peterson, all through April 2013. Business Support Council, Antoinette Emerson, Peter Russell, Kathy Dinkle, Peter Eschweiler, John Crisco, Ben Lane, Peter Rogavin, Karen Kleinman, all through April 2013. Farmers Market Committee, Tony Emerson, Peter Rogavin, Sarah Rogavin, Andy Goodman, Amanda Dundas, Alicia Serabin, Stuart Vance, Melissa Wurger, Marina Stopler, and Sarah Huckinen, all through April 2013. And the Pleasantville Recycles Committee, Dan Turner, Kim Turner, Ruth Fisher, Sharon Evrutek, Christine O'Grizlo, Helen Muir, and Justine Collins, all through April 2013. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I, Colleen, your inaugural resolution, number fifty-eight.
Resolve that stated meetings of the Board of Trustees shall be held at 8:00 p.m. on the second and fourth Mondays of each month, except April, when the first regular meeting, the organizational meeting, shall be the first Monday and shall convene at 7:00 p.m. Work sessions shall commence at 7:00 p.m. on the second, fourth Monday of every month from May through December, then every Monday at 7:00 p.m. during the months of January, February, March, and April. When any such meeting date falls on a legal holiday, the meeting shall be held on the next succeeding day without further notice, unless amended by the Board of Trustees. All meetings of the Board of Trustees will take place at Village Hall, Ader Wheelie Avenue, second floor, unless otherwise noticed.
Is there a second?
Second.
I want to note that we are going to be experimenting with consolidating some of our work sessions, and so this schedule may be modestly revised as the year progresses. All in favor?
Aye.
I, motion approved, number fifty-nine.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby sets the following procedure for calling for a special meeting by the Board of Trustees. A special meeting can be called by either the mayor, or at least two trustees acting together. The Board of Trustees will be contacted by either telephone, fax, or email. In the event a special meeting is to be called, all attempts will be made to contact the news media and public as soon as practical, is that practicable? After calling for the special meeting.
Practicable. Practicable?
It's old English.
Yeah.
Practicable, we can take that.
The Queens English.
Exactly.
You all right, Kim, ma'am?
I'm trying. I'm okay. Second. Sorry.
Second.
I lost it there. All in favor?
Aye.
I, motion approved, number sixty, Jonathan.
Resolve that the Journal News is hereby designated as the official newspaper for the Village of Pleasantville.
Second. Is, all in favor?
Aye.
Sixty-one, Rob.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following employees to be authorized signatories for drafts and transactions at all depositories. Peter Shearer, Mayor, Merrick Schwartz, Treasurer, Pamela Hoffman, Deputy Treasurer, Lorian Pierce, Bookkeeper.
All in, second, is it?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I, motion approved, number sixty-two, Colleen.
Sorry, Colleen.
You can summarize.
Resolve that the Bank of New York, the J.P. Morgan Chase Bank, Pleasantville Branch, Wells Fargo Bank, Pleasantville Branch, TD Bank, Hudson Valley Bank, Webster Bank, and Cooperative Liquid Asset Security Systems, B, and the same are hereby designated as depositories for all funds of the Village of Pleasantville, and it is hereby directed that all funds of the Village of Pleasantville shall be deposited in said banks unless otherwise specified.
Chickamove it.
Unless otherwise specified, excuse me, specifically authorized, and be it further resolved, that no fund shall be paid by the Treasurer of the Village of Pleasantville, except pursuant to a judgment or order, or an audit and allowance by the Board of Trustees as required by law, and an order designated such funds, signed by the mayor or deputy mayor, and countersigned by the Treasurer, or in his or her absence by the Deputy Treasurer. And be it further resolved, that all checks or drafts or instruments for the withdrawal of money of the village from said depositories shall be signed by the Treasurer, and that compensation for services of employees or officers regularly employed by the day, week, month, or year may be paid by the order to the Treasurer for services actually rendered or performed without specific order or audit of the Board for the payment of principal and interest on duly issued village bonds and certificates of indebtedness or tax notes provided. However, that no wages shall be paid laborers, except on a payroll, as correct by the official of the village directly in charge of the work for which the money is being expended. And provided further, that if the rules of the County Civil Service Commission have been extended to apply to such employees or officers by the Treasurer and the Trustees, shall not audit any such bills rendered for compensation for services, nor shall the mayor sign, nor the Treasurer countersign, any orders for the payment of payroll for such employees or officers, until such payroll shall have been submitted to the County Civil Service Commission and certified by it that the payment or employment of said employees or officers is in accordance with the civil service law.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Shane Epstein.
Good. It gets more exciting than this, I want to say.
Oh, no, it doesn't get much more exciting.
I'll manage expectations carefully.
Number sixty-three.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the village administrator to approve in-state conferences in accordance with general municipal law, section seventy-seven-b, and further resolve that all out-of-state conferences be approved by the Board of Trustees.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby sets the standard business mileage rate for transportation expenses for village employees using their personal vehicles for village services, as per the rates guidelines set forth by the Internal Revenue Service.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
I, motion approved, Brian.
Whereas the Board of Trustees has determined to authorize payment in advance of audit of claims for public utility services, postage, freight, and express charges, and whereas all such claims shall be presented at the next regular meeting for audit, and whereas the claimant and officer incurring or approving the same shall be jointly and severally liable for any amount disallowed by the Board of Trustees, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees authorizes payment in advance of audit of claims for public utility services, postage, freights, and express charges, and all such claims shall be presented at the next regular meeting for audit, and the claimant and officer in... of Trustees authorizes payment in advance of audit of claims for public utility services, postage, freights, and express charges, and all such claims shall be presented at the next regular meeting for audit, and the claimant and officer incurring or approving the same shall be jointly and severally liable for any amount disallowed by the Board of Trustees. Should I go on? No.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Number 66.
I think this is a setup.
Jonathan usually gets the long one. I don't know what's happening.
I would, Colleen, do the scope and objective.
Yeah. Resolve that the village treasurer is hereby authorized to implement the following investment policy for the village of Pleasantville. Scope: This investment policy applies to all monies and other financial resources available for investment on its own behalf or on behalf of any other entity or individual. The objectives, the primary objectives of the local government's investment activities are in priority, ordered to confirm with all applicable federal, state, and other legal requirements, to provide sufficient liquidity to meet all operating requirements, and to obtain a reasonable rate of return, also including delegation of authority, prudence, diversification, internal controls, designation of depositories, collateralizing of deposits, safekeeping and collateralization, permitted investments, authorized financial institutions and dealers, purchase of investments, repurchase agreements, and the appendix A, all as indicated in the record below.
Well done. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Basically, this is, all we can do is put our money in cash.
That's, you know.
Savings accounts.
We are, we are regulated.
Nine pages to say that.
We are heavily regulated by state legislation on what we can invest in, and that is a good thing.
Mindy, number 60.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees of the village of Pleasantville hereby adopts the purchasing policy as filed in the office of the village clerk.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is the same procurement policy we have had in the past, which specifies the levels at which we need two verbal quotes and the next level up for three written quotes for various services. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. 68, Jonathan.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees of the village of Pleasantville hereby adopts the credit card policy as filed in the office of the village clerk.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's a policy that we've established that includes general guidelines, treasurer and deputy treasurer responsibilities, card order responsibilities, requirements for lost or stolen cards, and appropriate use of cards. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. There being no further resolutions, I think we have completed the business of our annual organizational meeting. We will be back same time, same channel, a week from today, Monday, April 9, which is the occasion for our budget hearing, as well as our next regular meeting. I want to thank you all. I want to welcome Colleen to the board. I want to thank Judge Curley for serving ably, as he always does, to swear us all in and